Okay, it's about seven o'clock, so the meeting will come to order. Good evening, this is Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting, today is April 5th, 2021. Doring, good evening, may we have a roll call, please?
President Hu?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
President?
Commissioner Brooke?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Dick? Alternate Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Quinones? Commissioner Quinones? Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Shook?
Here.
Commissioner K. Seven? Commissioner Watson?
Here.
And Commissioner Whitehurst? Commissioner Whitehurst?
All right, thank you. I think I see Commissioner Quinones' name on there, right?
Yes, hi, I'm here. Sorry, my computer was kind of freezing, but yes, I'm here, I'm present.
Okay, and Commissioner Whitehurst is not here?
I don't see his name on the attendees list, so no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Doring. And communications commissioners, do you want to report any commissioners? Any meetings that you have attended since our last meeting? Okay, I see none, so let's do the consideration of minutes. Commissioners, do you have any comments, corrections, deletions, additions you want to make to the minutes? I see none, so I will declare approved. Thank you, Doring, for your hard work on that one. All right. I will sign it and email to you as usual. All right, so I'm going to open up our public hearing. So this is a application number ZCA 2021-00002. The applicant requests to annex the two properties listed in the agenda item to the city of Tiger. No new developments proposed on the subject properties at this time. And the location is 12200 Southwest Bull Mountain Road. So before I begin the public testimony, I have some request statement that I have to read. The applicable approval criteria are those listed on page one of the staff report, available at the City of Tiger's website. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable approval criteria listed on page one of the staff report, or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation they are believed to apply to the decision. Finally, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford a decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board appeal based on that issue. Here are some procedure items. Commissioners, if you wish to abstain or declare conflict interest, please raise your hand right now. Commissioner Shook, please go ahead.
I do not have a conflict of interest, but I wanted to disclose that I know Kelly Ritz with Venture Properties. I don't have any personal connection to the company or to the application today, but I wanted to disclose that.
All right, thank you very much. You may lower your hand. Thank you. Mike, do we have anybody calling in at this point? Okay, so we don't have anybody wishing to challenge us for bias or conflict interest. All right, next, commissioners, if you wish to report any ex parte contacts or communication with regard to this case, please raise your hand right now. All right, I see none. And commissioners, if you have visited the site of the proposal, please raise your hand right now. All right?
I have not, like, gotten out of the car and visited it, but I live like two blocks away, I drive by and see it all the time.
So you have been there physically?
So I've been there, but like I said, I haven't stopped the car, examined the place, or walked out and looked at it, or anything like that. But I'm quite familiar with the spot.
Okay, we'll put you down as being there.
Okay, thanks.
In addition to Commissioner Roberts, Commissioner Jackson also raised his hand, so we have two commissioners. Thank you. All right, so there's nobody in the audience still, so I'll skip the next one. All right, so I would like to give a brief description of how the hearing will proceed. First, the staff will give their staff report, and then the applicant will make their presentation. After that, we will take public testimony. If you're watching this livestream and would like to provide public testimony, please call in at 503-966-4101. Again, 503-966-4101. All right, so I would like to introduce the staff member, Assistant Planner Lena Smith, for the presentation. Please go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Lena Smith, I'm an assistant planner in the Community Development Department, and I'll be presenting on the fruit annexation tonight. Let me share my screen. So tonight's proposal is to annex two properties located south of Bull Mountain Road and north of Beef Bend Road into the city of Tiger. The applicant is not proposing any new development on the subject properties at this time. If this annexation is approved, the subject properties will automatically be assigned to the Tiger R7 Zone, which is medium-density residential. City staff, including the engineering and public works departments, reviewed the applicant's proposal and determined there are adequate public facilities and services available to the subject properties. Additionally, as detailed in the staff report submitted to the planning commission, the proposed annexation meets all applicable approval criteria in the Tiger Community Development Code, the Tiger Comprehensive Plan, Metro Code, and state statutes. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here tonight, in case you have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any question for Lena? Commissioner Roberts, you have your hand up. Nope?
I should have removed it from when I discussed visiting the site. Sorry, I didn't mean to take, I should have taken it down.
No problem.
Sorry, Lena.
Commissioner Jackson, you have a question, please go ahead.
Well, it's just kind of a general question, if no one else has any questions specific to this application. So I was just curious, I think this is the first annexation I've seen where the properties bordered another city, and I was just curious what determines which city an annexed property goes to in a case like that.
That's a good question. I think in this case, because, let's see, they're primarily surrounded by Tiger, and they would be connecting to Tiger services, specifically sewer and stormwater. That would require them to annex into Tiger. I did send a copy of this proposal to King City to review as well, so they were included. I didn't receive any objections or comments from them.
Okay, thank you.
I can further answer that. The cities and the county, we all have urban service area agreements that are written up between us, and we essentially draw lines on maps for areas that we would annex that are known as future, areas of future urban services, so that's how it's decided.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding correctly, it's primarily service-based, it sounds like, as far as service coverage?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay.
Pinch of politics, true.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you. Before I move on, Commissioner Roberts, would you please mute your microphone, please? Thank you. All right, Commissioner Miranda, you have a question, please go ahead.
Yes, this is also more of a general question. I was wondering if, when the surrounding R7 properties were annexed, if you knew?
I'm not aware of that. If you give me a couple of minutes, I can try searching on the map, so let me go off-screen for a little.
Oh, thank you, it's not dire, thank you.
Okay, so we can go back, come back to Lena later, but at this time, applicant, Mimi, do you have, hi, would you like to make your presentation? Do you have anything you want to add? Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Mimi Dukas, I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of Venture Properties, the applicant. We don't really have a presentation tonight, annexation is fairly straightforward in terms of criteria, and I believe staff has done the general overview. The criteria is generally that you need to be adjacent to the city, that you need urban serviceability, and that you need a willing applicant, and we have all of those, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to join the city of Tiger. Venture Properties has a long history of working with Tiger, and we're excited to move forward with the project. Aside from that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? I don't see anybody raising their hand, so I guess not. Lena, do you find out the answer to that question?
Yes, it looks like the surrounding neighborhoods were primarily annexed during the 2000s. It looks like the range of 2002 to 2013.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for either the staff or the applicant? All right, I see none, so thank you very much. Mike, do we have anybody calling in at this point? Okay, I will take that as nobody wanting to testify, so commissioners, your last chance to ask questions. Okay, I see none, so I guess this is a pretty straightforward case, so now let's move on, move on, go ahead, Tom.
I should have put my hand up, but excuse me, Commissioner President, but I was wondering if we had advertised a specific time period for public comments, if we need to wait a few minutes?
The website says seven o'clock, people can call in at seven, but we can wait a couple more minutes until 7:15?
I think that would be appropriate. I know staff have been affected by some neighbors who indicated they might call in, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mike. Commissioners?
For the record, once again, forgot that I'm Tom Maguire, the Assistant Community Development Director for Tiger, I always forget to introduce myself, so.
Well, Commissioner, at this time, you can think about a motion.
We're waiting for 7:15 to appear on the clock before we can make a motion?
Yeah, I'll give it 30 more seconds. So if you want to make a, if you want to provide public testimony, please call in at 503-966-4101. We'll give you a few more 15 seconds.
President, I believe the website, actually it's posted on the website, that there can call in at 7:15, so yeah.
Okay.
It'd be good if we just a couple more minutes.
Okay, couple more minutes. I'll give him 30 more seconds. Okay, Mike, do we have anybody on the line? Okay, thank you very much. So I will close the public testimony section of the hearing. Commissioners, it's time for deliberation. Comments, arguments for, against?
Simple comment, it sounds very straightforward, and I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Let's see, I'll, Commissioner Robert, would you, are you willing to make a motion later, or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I can do it right now, I think.
Okay, we are making a recommendation to the city council? And I don't think there's any approval conditions, so.
Okay, all right, so I'd like to move the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to city council for application ZCA 2021-00002, and adoption of the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report, if any, and/or based on any testimony received.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion in front of us for recommendation to the city council to approve the current application and adopt the finding in the staff report. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Jackson, second. All right, so now, please take a moment to locate the raise hand button if you want to vote to approve in favor of the motion, and give you five seconds to raise your hand. Okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I see. Please keep your hands up until I ask you, thank you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so I see seven hands. Yep, we have, yeah, we have seven voting commissioners present today, so that's unanimous. All right, so the motion passed, unanimous, so the city council will be scheduled to take up this case on May 11. So if you have any question about that, please contact the staff. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our next item. We have two briefing. First one, 1A is Washington Square Regional Center, and it will be presented by Senior Planner Susan Shanks. Hi, Susan.
Hi, President Hu, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Susan Shanks, I'm a senior planner with the City of Tiger, and I will be briefing you all tonight on the Washington Square Regional Center update project. And Lena Smith, who you just heard from for the annexation, she's going to stay on and do a related briefing, having to do with the Washington Square Regional Center area. So I'll kind of tee her up a little bit, but she'll have a follow-up briefing, and the two are related. And just, you know, I know I recently did a briefing with the planning commission, I think it was February 1st or thereabout, so about two months ago, and so if you might recall, just as to bring you up to speed, that I said I'd be back because we were going to do a big kickoff for a broad engagement effort for the Washington Square Regional Center project, so I'm essentially here to tell you about that. So it's not a very long briefing, I'm not going to go into great detail, but it's to make you aware of this community engagement effort, and hopefully to also enlist your help in spreading the word. So with that, let me share my screen. Can you see the first slide of my presentation? Great, so I'm going to attempt to also make it larger. So Mike Nolup taught me this trick, and I think, Mike, if I, just correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to accidentally cut everybody off. Do I just click on this button up here? Do you? I've only done it once before at city council, and I thought you were the one that showed me how to make it by doing full screen. Ah, there we go, I just didn't want to cut anybody off. Okay.
By the way, Craig, your mic is on, would you please mute it? Thank you.
Okay, great, so yay, I know bigger is always better in these cases, but I'm going to show you a lot of pictures, so not a lot of reading tonight. So this is my fourth briefing to the planning commission on this project. And as I was just explaining, we're doing this big community engagement effort. Essentially, it's an interactive online open house. It's open from April 1st through April 30th, so the month of April. We are offering $50 gift cards as an incentive for participation, and also to compensate people for their time. It's a really meaty kind of open house, so we really want to make it worth people's while, that they might be able to win one of four $50 gift cards. So that's what that is about. And, oh, I think I need to make this a tiny bit smaller to see the full screen. Nope, hold on. Too big, too small. Okay, I think you're seeing the whole, well, you're not quite seeing the whole screen, or at least I'm not seeing it. Okay, I think that's good enough. So this is just a reminder of kind of the area that we're focusing on. So the regional center, as you might remember, is actually within the city of Tiger. There's a part of it, a small part, that's in unincorporated Washington County. And then there's also a portion of it that's in Beaverton. And so the area that you're actually seeing here, that's kind of shaded in with color, are the areas that we're asking people to give us their opinion about in the online open house. And it's the area that's within our Tiger Planning Service Area. So that actually, that question was recently just asked and answered about annexations. So the area, for example, in this area that's within unincorporated Washington County, as those areas, and it's kind of, I'll try to point it out with my cursor, this area up here, kind of this top part of the yellow area, that's currently not in the city of Tiger. It's in unincorporated Washington County, but it's in our Planning Service Area. So as properties choose to annex to the city, when they become adjacent to the city boundary, and properties have annexed along this edge here over time, you might remember some, that they would, it's already been decided that they would become part of the city of Tiger. So because it's in our planning area, we include it in these long-range planning efforts. So we're not actually including the portion of the regional center in Beaverton, because Beaverton, those properties will never be in the city of Tiger, and we don't have any kind of land use authority, although we definitely have been coordinating with Beaverton's staff, as well as we're sending notices to Beaverton businesses, because they work in the area and use, you know, streets and roads in the area. So just want to make it really clear, and this is one of the challenging things of this project, is to make it clear to folks that the regional center is, you know, this big, but we're actually, when we're getting down to making recommendations to the Tiger Planning Commission, as well as the Tiger City Council, we're only asking people questions and asking for people to prioritize things that are within Tiger's kind of realm, which is our planning area. So that's those areas that are shaded that you see here. There's three, what we call sub-areas, because they're very different kinds of areas. So the purple one on the left, we call that the Nimbus Cascade Subarea, and that, as you might know, is just named after the streets that serve those areas. And then the mall sub-area, that probably one is, that's probably pretty obvious, that's where the Washington Square Mall is located. And then on the right-hand side, the yellow area, we're calling that the Metzger Subarea. It's probably the most diverse area in that it has, you know, a lot of businesses along Greenberg Road, which is on the left-hand side of the sub-area. And then it's got a large wetland down near Highway 217, and then it's got some smaller, more local serving businesses on Hall Boulevard, and then it's got some housing, some, it's part of an older neighborhood that has single-family homes as well as multifamily homes. And so this area has a lot of different things going on, but just for simplicity, we're calling it the Metzger Subarea. And so what we're asking people about, and I hope you do visit the open house, the website is down below, and I'm happy to share that. Doring has this presentation, so you'll have it in the presentation, but it's on our Engage website, so it's engage.tiger-or.gov, and then just backslash the square, so pretty easy. This is actually, if you've never been there, it's a great place to visit and see all the different ways that we're engaging with the community on lots of different topics and projects. So this is where the Washington Square Online Open House is being hosted. And these are the five kind of topics that we're asking people questions about. So we are asking people generally about the vision for the regional center, and then we have some very specific questions with regard to the different sub-areas. Subarea 1, Subarea 2, 3, for the different areas that were on the map that I just showed you. And then generally, again, we have some questions for folks, mostly about priorities. Where do people want to see us focus our energy to improve pedestrian and bicycle facilities in this area? Because, as some of you might know, or if you remember from my previous presentations, this area, and even the large roads in this area, like Greenberg and Hall, they're missing key pieces of sidewalk and bike lanes. There's a lot of streets in the Metzger area that don't have basically all pet and bike facilities either. And, you know, especially Greenberg and Hall, which are rather large streets, and then Highway 217, you know, crossing those roads and having there be safe crossings of those roads is, you know, super important. So we're asking people, because transportation improvements can be very expensive, we're asking people a lot of questions about where do you want us to prioritize our limited resources? Because we really want to focus on those areas where people want to see some improvements, where hopefully, you know, they see a big need. So that's kind of just generally what we're asking people in the open house. None of the questions in the open house are required, so people can just answer questions about Subarea 2, for example, if they wanted to, and move on. So, you know, it is a lot of information that we're both giving people and asking them to comment on, so we're hoping that people can just, you know, kind of feel comfortable about. about doing what they feel, you know, they have enough time to do. So that's what we're having people focus on. And just to give you a brief idea, and this is kind of a strange little map I'm showing here. It's really just for informational purposes. This was something I had to draw up just because, you know, with COVID and working remotely. We wanted to do a mailing to let people know about the online open house. So I had to draw this funky map for our GIS folks because we wanted to mail notices about the open house to all the residents that lived around the regional center. So what you're just showing, seeing on this map here is that the darker outline that's kind of outlined there, those were all the places, all the people that are going to actually get a notice about the open house. And it's actually about 6,500 residents in that area. And then, and sorry, I should have said, just for reference, kind of the green oval that you see there, that's generally where the Washington Square Regional Center is. So as you can see, we went outside of that area to include all of Metzger. We went on the other side of 217 to include residents in the, like, kind of Greenberg area. And of course, we included all the businesses in the regional center. So the blue area and the pink area inside the green oval, which is primarily commercial, we sent it directly to the businesses in those areas. And there's about 1,000 businesses in the regional center total. So we sent out those notifications about the open house, both in English and in Spanish. We're also going to be promoting the open house through our Stakeholder Working Group as well as utilizing some of our Stakeholder Working Group members to gather their group of networks together and do small focus groups to help, you know, to help people understand what we're asking them and to get them familiar with the open house so they feel comfortable participating. And the open house actually is also in English and in Spanish. We have sent out an email to our Interested Parties list, which is about, I think, 60 or so people are on Interested Party list right now. And of course, we're also going to be promoting it through social media. So those are all the different ways that we're going to be promoting it. In addition, I've also been doing briefings to the various other groups that are interested in the Washington Square Regional Centers. So for example, I gave a briefing to CPO 4M recently. I'm going to be briefing the Tigard Transportation Advisory Committee as well as the Metzger Park Advisory Committee. So different groups like that, I'll be doing briefings to as well. Okay, so now on to the really fun stuff. So that's all about the online open house. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of a teaser here. We had these graphics done by our consultant team to both help people understand what the original vision was, which was done 20 years ago. And again, this was an update project, so it's updating the original vision because so much has changed since then. But it's helping people, like, kind of visually understand the original vision as compared to the proposed vision. So I'm just going to go back and forth between these two images just to give you kind of a sense of the kinds of changes. So, and I'll give you a little bit of a clue. Look at the size of the pink area and the size of it in this proposed vision versus the size of it in the original vision. So that's one thing that is quite a large change between 20 years ago and what we're going to be, what we are proposing and asking for feedback on through this open house, is that we are proposing to basically shrink the pink area. So I'll just go back and show you that again. So that's the pink area that we're proposing, and that's actually the size of the pink area that was originally envisioned. And just really briefly, the pink area is where the original vision imagined very tall, like 20 stories tall, mixed-use development. So residential, commercial, office, the whole nine yards, in very tall, dense buildings. So very urban. So that's what the original vision imagined. It imagined it on the Washington Square site. It imagined it across the street, across Greenberg, to the right-hand side. It also imagined it on the other side of Highway 217, so the area that's served by Cascade Avenue. So it was quite large. And if you remember from my update last time, what we realized with our analysis is that that is just really unlikely to happen in all of those locations, as well as to that height. And so we're kind of, we're downsizing the vision. We still think it's really appropriate on the mall site for more mixed-use, urban, walkable development to occur on the mall property. And there's a number of reasons why that's, you know, more true than for the other areas. But that's kind of one of the main areas where we can imagine the most kind of transformation in this area versus the area across Highway 217 that in this image is in blue, but in this image is in pink. So that's one of the key things that we're doing here. And then the other thing that we're doing is, you might have seen this as I flash back and forth, the green dashed line that kind of encircles the whole area to the right, that was part of the original vision. It's a wonderful idea. It's essentially a loop trail that connects to Fano Creek on the left-hand side. So that the solid green line on the left-hand side of this vision is Fano Creek Trail. And that dashed green line was this other trail that was envisioned to connect to it in the south and then loop around and connect to it again in the north. To do that requires two crossings, bridges over Highway 217, as shown by these little green bridges here, as well as a lot of participation by private property owners to have a trail on their property because not, like, none of this trail, or very little of it, is in public right-of-way. And so what we've realized is not only did other jurisdictions, like Beaverton and the Parks District for Beaverton, which is the Twalaton Hills Park and Rec District, none of them kept that in their plans. They basically determined at some point in their planning processes over time in the last 20 years that that trail was going to be too much of a lift. It was just not happening. And so given just the lack of kind of interest in completing this trail and kind of prioritization, because it needed to be a multi-jurisdictional project, we are saying, you know what, like, let's back away from that. And in lieu of that, what we're trying to focus on is looking at ways to connect people to Fano Creek Trail in different ways. So for example, in this particular image, which is the proposed vision, we're looking at potentially, and this is still potential, to do one overcrossing, which would just be a pet bike overcrossing where that little green bridge is, right here. So to connect the neighborhood that is Metzger across 217, and then this green arrow just kind of indicates how there's many ways we can bring people over to the trail over here. So that's, you know, that's, you know, something that we're asking people about. You know, is that a priority to them? And then the other possibility for a connection over Highway 217 to overcome that barrier is this yellow dashed line here, which is connecting kind of the commercial areas, the mall area to the Cascade business area. So we're asking people, like, if you had to choose one, would you choose to do a new overcrossing in this location, connecting the commercial areas? Are you okay with us just trying to focus on improving the Greenberg Crossing that currently exists that doesn't really have really great pet bike facilities on it right now? And there's a lot of people that feel really uncomfortable using Greenberg for walking or biking because the Highway 217 interchange is right there. But there's a lot we could do to improve that. So we're asking people, you know, would you be okay with that? It could probably happen sooner than later. And we kind of explained that bridges are super expensive and they take a while, but they have benefits. So it's kind of that trade-off, you know, a smaller project that could happen sooner versus a bigger project, but a different kind of crossing that might feel more comfortable for pedestrians and bicyclists over Highway 217 in this location. So those are the kinds of transportation questions that we're asking people on the open house. And certainly, we're asking people about, you know, do you want us to focus on, you know, safer crossings of Hall Boulevard, which is over here to the right? And this is showing a new park that Tiger will be developing in the next couple of years? Or do you want us to focus on safe pedestrian and bike crossings of Greenberg Road so that you, so folks can better access, like, the mall and the different businesses, you know, between the neighborhood and the mall? So those are kind of, that's like the transportation proposal and like the extent of that pink area and what it means are like the biggest changes that we're proposing here. And actually, I'd say there's probably a third change that is very significant. And I just want to point out, like, notice that there's this little yellow icon here to indicate that this is like low-density housing. So single-detached houses, duplexes, those kinds of, that kind of housing. And this purple here is higher-density housing, so six-story apartment buildings, for example. And this orange icon shows kind of something in between. It shows like a three-story, small apartment building, and it also shows some row houses. And in the previous vision, we didn't really have what I'm going to call medium-density housing. The vision had low-density housing, which is the yellow icon, and it had higher-density housing, which is the purple icon. And what we're proposing and what we heard a lot from the community is, how about something in between? And so the proposed vision includes kind of a middle ground in between the high and the low. So those are the three main things that we're proposing that is different from the original vision. So I'm going to pause there just to see if anybody has any questions about understanding these graphics or if they want more information.
Susan, where is Danny Row in relation, is that further north?
Yeah, Danny Row is way up here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So that's in Beaverton.
Yeah, I like biking through it sometimes to go to the trail on the other side.
Yeah, so they're actually working on trying to do, like, extending Fano Creek Trail. I know that there's a gap that they're working on filling for the Fano Creek Trail that I think is up in that area. So check out the THPRD, which is the Twalaton Hills Park and Rec District, or the Beaverton website, or I could try to hunt it down for you because there might be some improvements happening in that area in the future.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Craig?
Hi, Susan. This is Craig Shuck.
Hi.
Hi, I have a question for you as it relates to these bridges versus improving the Greenberg overpass.
Yep.
Do you provide any guidance to people when you're saying, hey, you can choose between doing something now or doing something later? Is there any guidance about the budget or the parameter? I mean, it seems like you said the bridges are very expensive, and I would think they would be.
Yes, yes.
To add two bridges seems like, oh my gosh, that'd be a killer, you know? So what kind of guidance do you provide?
Essentially, we say that here are three options. A pet bike-only bridge generally in this location, improving the existing Greenberg Crossing, or a full road, which is the yellow dashed line in this location. And we provide the kind of same information I just provided with you, that bridges are very expensive and they take a long time, you know, to kind of gather the funding for. So it's definitely more of a long-term project, whereas improvements to an existing crossing are less expensive and could be completed probably sooner than later. So we kind of give them that general understanding that, you know, to help them make that decision. So that's just, we felt like if we...
General guidance, then nothing specific that says, okay.
Yeah, because we actually don't know, we would, like, for example, let's say, hands down, everybody said, I really want this new pet bike bridge, which is represented here by the green bridge and the dashed green line. If that's what we heard from the community, one of the things that I'm doing as part of the implementation of this project is once we hear from the community and actually develop our final set of recommendations to bring to you as well as to bring to the city council, that I will be coordinating with my other coworker, and that's Dave Roth, and he's the Senior Transportation Planner. And he's actually, and I think you've gotten a briefing from him, I think recently, on the Transportation System Plan Update. So essentially, that through my project, because it's able to dive a little bit deeper into what people want and what we think the needs are here, my project's recommendations will be folded in, the transportation pieces, obviously, will be folded in to the TSP update. And through the TSP update, that's when, you know, things get then elevated and get on the metro, you know, transportation project list. It becomes eligible for more funding. We start looking at funding strategies. So if, like, the public says, like, this is what I really want, whether it's A, B, or C, through the process of updating our TSP, as well as other kind of implementation things that I may do as follow-up items, we'll be looking for ways to then fund it. But we are only asking people, like, kind of pick one, so don't pick all three. Or to prioritize them, I should say, I think we ask them to prioritize it to just get a sense of how strongly people think. But we are really thinking that, you know, ideally, Greenberg Road, no matter what, will see improvements at some point because that just is almost a no-brainer. But again, we're kind of curious if people feel that this is a big benefit in doing either of these other bridges based on where they want to get to and their comfort level being a pedestrian or bicyclist in this area.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Jamie.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, Jamie.
Commissioner Watson, on the new vehicular bridge option, is it true to say that that's likely to benefit commercial, the commercial development by creating more ways for traffic to move through the area rather than it being of benefit to pedestrians or in that way?
It would be beneficial to both. It would be beneficial to pedestrians and bicyclists because any new bridge would have really good, high-quality pet and bike facilities. It would just have to. And so this would actually connect all the office workers that are in that blue area along Cascade, as well as, I mean, there's commercials there, there's a whole bunch of things going on in there. Like, it would, you know, it would give them opportunity, like, to go over to, like, the mall area and have lunch where there are more places to eat, for example. Then right now, either they wouldn't go there or they'd get in their car to go there. And it would allow, obviously, people from Metzger, you know, to walk through the mall property and to walk over that bridge. So it would definitely have pet and bike facilities, but it would also have cars. And so if the mall transforms in the way that we kind of expect it to do over time, that it might actually, that development that happens on the mall property might spill over onto the other side of Highway 217, more so if there was a bridge there. Without the bridge, the area that's just served by Cascade Avenue is, you know, more cut off from, you know, other, also, you know, it's cut off from, you know, everything on this side because of Highway 217, and then it's cut off from other things to the west because of the railroad tracks. So, yeah, we would expect maybe to see a bunch of different things maybe happen as a result of putting a bridge in that location.
Great, thank you. And one more elaboration, I guess, is that, would you, if that new bridge were to be added, would, are you anticipating that, like, Greenberg, the traffic would be less? Like, it would be more even, the traffic would be more evenly distributed and more pedestrian-friendly, make Greenberg more pedestrian-friendly than it is?
You know, I can't, not being a traffic engineer, I can give you my really high-level, like, transportation planner answer, but we haven't, yeah, we haven't studied it to that level. But generally speaking, when you add connections in an area where there's limitations or barriers, it tends to disperse, you know, car traffic. It just, you know, generally tends to as a rule of thumb. You know, that's not necessarily always true or true to the same degree because context really matters, the land uses that are there really matter. So, yeah, you might see some, you know, you might see some folks from, like, the neighborhood wanting, like, preferring to travel through the mall and over a new bridge, depending on where they're going. So it would tend to, you know, provide an additional connection, and that's also always generally a good thing. But in terms of Greenberg, whether it takes traffic specifically off Greenberg, you know, based on its proximity, like, maybe yes. But honestly, we don't see a lot of high-volume traffic after, like, if you're on 217 and you're getting off at 217, there's a lot of traffic right up into that first entrance. Well, the entrance is like, basically, you've got Lincoln Center to the right, right where this little pink, you know, icon is, like, Lincoln Center's there. So a lot of office workers are taking Highway 217. They're just jumping off on Greenberg, and they're going right to Lincoln Center. Other folks are going to the mall, and the first entrance to the mall is right, also pretty close to Highway 217. pretty close to Highway 217. You see traffic volumes drop off significantly the further north you go on Greenberg. And one of the things that we really want to do, and we're already having our consultant team work on, is do a little bit more design work on how can we make Greenberg a better neighborhood street? Given the constraints of existing development on both sides, you know, including the cemetery on one side where there's currently no sidewalk, how can we fit in pedestrian and bike facilities and better crossings on Greenberg, because that's the priority? We don't need, like, as far as I understand, based on traffic volumes, we don't need more travel lanes, we need ped and bike facilities, and we need better crossings. So, regardless of what bridge happens here, if one happens here, one of the recommendations, yeah, is going to be focusing on how to make Greenberg a better street for people.
Great, looks great, Susan, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And then, one last map I'm going to show you, just to kind of dive in a little bit more on the transportation thing briefly. This is actually one of the images we also produced for the open house. It kind of is showing those, the existing crossings over 217, which is the solid orange arrows, and a potential proposed, you know, location for the other two bridges. This is just kind of showing it in a slightly different view over an aerial map. And then, it's also showing people, you know, where there's going to be a new park over here on the other side of Hall Boulevard. It's also showing people where there's going to be a new park down here, you know, Begon Park, along the Ash Creek Corridor. And it shows people more specifically where the Fano Creek Trailhead here, Trailhead Axis is, which is right here. And then, this is the furthest northern point of the trail axis for the Tiger Heritage Street Trail. So, it's just orienting people to where existing crossings are, where there might be potential new crossings, where some of the facilities, like Metzger Park, is existing over here, where some future parks are going to be, as well as some existing trailheads, just to help orient people a little bit better. Because, again, we're asking people, like, what do you want us to focus on? And then, just in general, to summarize kind of the proposal versus the original vision, and I think, you know, I kind of said some similar things with our last briefing, is that, you know, we really think the original vision has merit. It really was imagining this place to be a much more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, like, human-centric, but denser, you know, transit-oriented area, where a lot of people can live and work, and hopefully use transit to, you know, reduce our impacts on the environment. And where we see that still able to happen, and the market studies also bear this out, as well as, you know, Mesa Rich and doing their Sears redevelopment project, we're seeing the mall move in this direction as well, to, you know, to be competitive, that they need to provide kind of more amenities and more walkable development, that we think that maintaining the original vision on the mall property makes sense. For the other areas outside of the mall property, we're kind of talking about right-sizing the vision, based on what we think the market can do, and we don't see the market bringing, you know, 20-story buildings along Cascade Avenue. Like, that is just not going to happen in the next 20 years, it's just not. So, it's right-sizing that original vision for the other areas, bringing in that medium-density housing area, rather than having it just be high and low-density housing area for the Metzger side of things. And then, as I was just kind of talking about, we really need to refine the original transportation vision, because whether it was like multi-jurisdictional priorities, or lack of funding, or just lots of big projects, you know, the transportation vision that 20 years ago people thought would be really great, even though it is really great, it hasn't happened, because it was too big. It was too big of a lift for it to ever happen. And so, you know, lastly, we just really want to focus on stuff that, you know, cannot be accomplished in the near term, like, so over the next 20 years, that's really financially achievable, and, you know, something that the market and the city can really deliver on. So, that's kind of a summary of what the proposal is about, and that's what we're asking people for feedback on. And in terms of next steps, you know, as I talked about at the top of this briefing, you know, we're doing this big open house, we really hope you talk to your friends and neighbors, and, you know, anybody that is familiar with this area, works in this area, travels to shops in this area, please, you know, give them the open house website link. We would very much appreciate it, we really want to hear from people. And we're going to take that feedback, and we're going to basically use it to come up with our final set of recommendations. We're going to be meeting with our stakeholder working group one last time, to get their, like, their final comments on everything. And then, we're going to be bringing those recommendations to Planning Commission, and then to City Council through a legislative project that you're kind of, I think, familiar with, or some of you are familiar with by now. And Leah's actually going to be talking about, like, kind of a legislative project that she's managing, that is actually going to advance potentially a piece of this project, but we're doing it now instead of later, and I'll have her actually summarize or tell you why we're doing it now instead of later. But actually, let me go back, just because I realized I didn't really tee up Lena very well. So, going back to this map, so over here is the mall area, and then we have Highway 217, and then the other side of the mall area is the Cascade area, because it's served by Cascade Avenue. So, one of the things that, well, the project that Lena is going to be talking with you about is about potentially changing, modifying what we currently have now in our code, which is a mall sub-district, which is pretty much over the mall property. And the mall sub-district, which was approved several years ago, allows car dealerships. And that's essentially how Jaguar Land Rover, which is now located down here, right at Highway 217 in Greenberg, that's how the Jaguar Land Rover site or business was able to locate here, because the mall sub-district, which includes this whole area, basically allows car dealerships. Again, based on our market studies, and really looking at where we expect to see kind of pedestrian-oriented development versus auto-oriented development, we realized, A, that there's actually a very strong demand for more car dealerships along the Highway 217 corridor, but also that this area over here, given its proximity to the Shoals Ferry interchange with 217, is really like a pedestrian wasteland. And so, we are proposing that we don't want to see more car dealerships necessarily on the mall properties. So, we want to shrink that mall sub-district, and potentially have a smaller sub-district placed over these properties, and keeping just part of it on over the Jaguar Land Rover site. And just so you know, even though the project that Lena is managing will be coming to you in May, we set it up that way, because we're going to also be bringing to you what we hear from the communities, what we hear from the community through the open house, because we're specifically asking them this question in the open house. Like, what do you think about car dealerships being located here versus over here? Because right now, they're allowed pretty much on the entire mall property. So, that's my setup for Lena, she'll show you something a little bit more detailed than what I've shown you here. And then, in terms of next steps, you know, like I said, we will, I will be coming back before you, as well as City Council, with another legislative project to adopt the recommendations. And that will be followed by a bunch of different implementation steps, some of which you'll be involved in, others of which you won't. TSP coordination, I mentioned that, it's our Transportation System Plan Update. Dave Roth will eventually be bringing our TSP update to you as a legislative project for your recommendation to council. And these, what we learned from our open house, and what we've learned through the Washington Square Project, will be reflected in that TSP update. And I will likely then be bringing code amendments to you to specifically change things in our Plan District Chapter that regulates development in the Washington Square Mall, to reflect the kinds of things I talked about, like, medium-density housing, and lowering the height from, you know, 200 feet down to something that's more reasonable. We'll also be looking into funding strategies, I'm working with Lloyd Purdy on some funding strategy ideas, as well as also working with our Finance Director, Toby LaFrance. And we're also going to be talking about some more affordable housing strategies, as well as economic development incentives. So, there's many different ways to implement long-range plans, and these are some of the things that will likely come out of this project. And like I said, you'll see some of these things, and other of these things will go straight to City Council. So, that, I believe, is, yeah, everything that I have. Do you have any questions? And I'm going to stop sharing my screen, so I can see you all. There. Any questions?
No, no questions, but wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's what happens when you do long-range planning areas for, you know, hundreds of acres. I hope it was digestible, and I really, I hope you all visit the open house. It's in the presentation that Doreen has that she can forward to you, so you all have the website link.
Yes, it was pretty understandable, and I agree, I definitely want to learn more. Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, I'm going to pass it off to Lena as part two of this Washington Square update. Lena?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will share my screen. And I think I can reach up to my screen. So, as Susan mentioned, the Washington Square Regional Center Plan District includes a sub-district that allows motor vehicle sales and rentals on specific properties. So, that's shown here in blue on the map, and it's pretty much limited to the Washington Square Mall properties. This one down here is the Jaguar Land Rover site. So, what city staff will be bringing to you next month is a proposal to reduce the overall size of this sub-district by about 80 acres, which would result in motor vehicle sales being allowed on one property on this side of Highway 217, and five properties on this side of Highway 217 along Cascade. As Susan mentioned, some of the background on why this change is being proposed, is based on market analysis and initial community outreach from Susan's long-range planning project, that has shown that the proposed areas are more appropriate for motor vehicle sales. The idea is to limit new car dealerships to areas without potential for pedestrian-oriented development. Again, as Susan mentioned, we're seeing, or we're hoping more, that the mall properties will develop into that more pedestrian-friendly, kind of more urban development. This proposal would substantially reduce the area that allows car dealerships. Again, we're shrinking the sub-district by about 80 acres, and this would prevent more dealerships from locating on the mall property, but allow car dealerships near Highway 217, where there is no potential for pedestrian-oriented development. We've heard from community members, you know, car dealerships are not neighborhood-serving businesses and not welcomed by all residents. However, they do have a regional customer base and are appropriately located in a regional center. They employ more people than other retail sales businesses, and provide skilled and unskilled local jobs at a range of salaries. So, it is about finding the right location for them. The proposed location would preserve the mall property for pedestrian-oriented development, and restrict new car dealerships to locations further away than those residential areas, kind of the Metzger areas. And city staff will formally present this to Planning Commission on May 3, and it'll be a public hearing, and we can provide more details at that time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Lena, so where is the motorcycle dealership right now? Is that right across from the Land Rover?
Oh, the Harley-Davidson?
Yeah, what, the old Harley-Davidson, yeah.
Susan, is that along, is that on Cascade, or?
It's on Cascade, there's actually two motorcycle dealerships on Cascade. One is the little, I think it's the triangular, like, right where your cursor is on the other side of the street.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, and I think there's another one further down. So, they're non-conforming uses right now, so they've been there, they predate the planning work that was done for this area 20 years ago. So, you know, it hasn't turned into that pedestrian-oriented environment, because it kind of doesn't want to be that. So, those are non-conforming uses, though, so they would still, they would continue to be non-conforming uses, based on this particular proposal. We are, and this map doesn't show it, but as you know, well, based on the maps that I was showing you, that Cascade connects down to Greenberg. And the thinking is that the nature of Greenberg, with Begon Park across the street, that's going to be developed shortly, and there's residential there, that there's more potential, you know, for future change at Cascade around Greenberg. So, we didn't want to necessarily just include the entire Cascade areas, like Auto Dealership Row. So, it was looking really at where, you know, in the northern part, based on how the Cascade street doesn't even have a double-sided development, you know, the highway is on the other side of Cascade Avenue where the hatching is, that when it opens up and gets closer to Greenberg, there's still some potential for different kinds of development, other than auto dealerships, you know, which tend to be very auto-oriented.
Okay, well, I look forward to more details for the May 3 hearing. Commissioner Jackson?
I was curious, comparing this to some of the previous maps we looked at, whereabouts would, if the yellow bridge, the northern potential bridge, for consideration, were to be built, where would that be approximately in comparison to this new sub-district map?
Lena, do you, do you know, I mean, I can't use my cursor, but see where the 217, you know, label is? It would kind of be right around there. Yeah, see how, like, where there's, how Cascade moves away from 217? Yeah, but that's like the shortest distance, like, right where that 217 label is, that's the shortest distance, you know, from one side to the other, and to land it in public right-of-way. There'd still need to be a lot more feasibility studies, like, if the public was really interested in seeing a bridge in this location, you know, we'd still need to, like, figure out exactly where it could work, but it would be kind of in this lower area, south of the hatched area.
Okay, thanks. And real quickly, is the reason that the proposed sub-district still has some area dedicated in the south part of Washington Square Mall, is that because of some of the reasons we heard earlier, that there's that stretch of Greenberg just after it passes over 217, where it's very traffic-heavy, and then that dissipates? Is that the reason to keep that part of the sub-district, or what's the reasoning there?
I think that's part of it, that, yes, it's right near the interchange, but also that it's the existing dealership as well.
Yeah, okay.
And it just went in recently, so to make them non-conforming right off the bat, when they were previously allowed it, so it's not taking away anything, it's shrinking it to what is, and that's a relatively new development, so that we don't see more of that, but still kind of recognizing, like, the city essentially recently approved that.
Gotcha, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I will stop sharing my screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena, thank you, Susan. We look forward to your next presentation. All right. I conclude Agenda Number Six, and we'll go on to other business. I see Tom, please go ahead.
Good evening. Actually, I don't really have any specific other business tonight. We did post the, maybe Doreen can provide a little bit more information, but we did post the training that our city attorney, Shelby Rahala, had done, we posted that up for, everybody can take a look at that in your spare time. If you're interested in anything, other types of training like that, such as that, I would please be, feel free to... please be, feel free to email me with any ideas you might have. Otherwise, we've seen the agenda, continue to see additional land use cases that are going to be heading our way in the next couple of months, and even a little bit into the summer. And we have several major legislative projects coming your way on the schedule as well. So we're actually getting back to a busy Planning Commission schedule. I don't have really anything beyond that, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has them.
I thought the training was really helpful, I was just going through a bunch of it, and it's awesome, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, we're really getting busier this year compared to last year, and
Yeah.
And we are, I think we're getting better at video conferencing, so, that's good.
Hopefully, by the time we, by the time we get it down, we'll be back meeting in person, I think.
Yeah, and I guess that's, that's all depends on what the state, and state or even the city government have to say about the restriction and stuff, yeah. But we should be able to get a vaccine by the end of May, so if anybody wants one, should be able to get one by the end of May, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so nobody have any questions at this time, so I guess we'll see you in two weeks, thank you everybody.
Yeah, good night everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.